Our April 9th regular board meeting. Glad you are here. Just a couple of quick reminders. Before we begin, I'd like to share these reminders with you. Please keep the aisles clear during our meeting to allow members of the school system and the Sheriff's Department to be able to move around. Also, except for when honoring the flag, our opening prayer, or participating in the call of the audience, please remain seated during our meeting. We hope to have a productive and efficient meeting, and your help is greatly appreciated. Ms. Bowie, would you please call the roll?
Good evening. Pete Wildeboer.
Present.
Melissa Mason.
Here.
Jessie Barnhart.
Here.
Pat Bradford.
I am here.
Stephanie Craybill.
Here.
Hugh McManus.
Yes, ma'am.
And Stephanie Walker.
Here.
Welcome again, everyone. Thank you for being here. At this point, I would entertain an approval of the, or a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
We have a second. Any discussion?
Yes, please.
Ms. Bradford?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to add to the agenda. Under all business, I actually make a, I move that we add a 10-minute discussion of the memo that we received today just a few hours ago about our district's finances.
Okay, there's a motion to discuss the agenda. I assume the information we received today, is there a second?
I'll second that.
There are first and second. Any further discussion on that?
Mr. Chairman, can you just repeat where you wanted to have that? Ms. Bradford?
Um, I think it fits under all business. But I'm not particular. I don't care.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Yeah, I, I am wondering what you want to discuss because it's the, it's up to the superintendent in our finance department to manage our affairs, and this really has nothing to do with, that the memo has nothing to do with our work. It has to do with employees' work who we do not manage. So I'm wondering what you, what you're interested in gleaning from this.
I think she would like to save that for the discussion. So we have a motion and a second. Ms. Walter?
Are we voting on this motion first?
We're going to do that yet, and then we'll, we'll continue. All right. Just because it sounds like it might be a little split vote, would you please call the roll? This is again to approve a 10-minute discussion addition.
Mr. Wildeboer.
I vote yes.
Ms. Mason.
Yes.
Ms. Barnhart.
Yes.
Ms. Bradford.
Yes.
Ms. Craybill.
No.
Mr. McManus.
Yes.
And Ms. Walker.
Yes.
That passes six to one. Are there any other discussions? Ms. Walker?
Thank you. I would, wanted to just amend the agenda down there on part, I think, 16, new business under B. I just want the wording to say school climate survey, not discipline survey. We talked about this at the last meeting, but I think we forgot to get it changed in it. And it, I mean, we have discipline questions for sure, but I just would like to change that to school climate survey.
Second.
Okay, you can second before I even got a chance to second. All right, we have a first and second. Any discussion? I think we can do this one. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed? Passes seven zero. Now, we have an amended agenda. We have a first and second to pass that. Any other discussions? All in favor of approving the amended agenda, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed? Passes seven zero. At this time, I would like to call forward, make sure I'm in the right place. I am. Miss Reverend Pastor Tony McGee from Liberty Baptist to lead us with the invocation. Pastor?
Let's all stand our feet. I just want to read a quick scripture, and then I'm going to pray. Proverbs 22:6, it says, "Train up a child in the way that he should go; when he is old, he will not depart." And I just, I just thank God for that, that insight, that this body here is, is helping us, those of us that are bringing our children to the education system, to train children up so that they'll know what to do and how to do it. So let's pray. Father, we just come to you right now in the name of Jesus. We thank you, Father, for this opportunity to pray and share this scripture. We pray, God, supernatural insight and wisdom upon these proceedings, Father, that what will be done will be, will be done in a way that will bring glory to your kingdom and strengthen and train our children, that they would be good citizens, those that, that honor you and honor each other. Father, and I just pray, God, you continue to bless us and keep us and strengthen us that we in fact would rise up and be all that we should be, giving you the praise, giving you glory, and giving you the honor. We thank you in Jesus's name. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. At this time, we will have Laney High School's chorus, directed by Jennifer Muske. Laney High School Laney chorus teacher will perform the national anthem.
Oh, say, can you see by the stars that we light? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's fastenings? Whose watchlights and bright stars through the perilous tides? For the rivers we watched were so gallantly streaming. And the waters red like the banks were steaming red. They grew through the night, but our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave? For the land of the free and the home of the brave.
And at this time, we ask Ms. Bradford to lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Ms. Bradford?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We are from Laney High School, and I'm not Jen Meskey, unfortunately. I'm Megan Pettigo, her student intern, and now they will all introduce themselves.
My name is Kara Stile, and I'm in 12th grade.
My name's Jericho O'Brien, and I'm in 11th grade.
My name's Sidney Puckett, and I'm in 11th grade.
My name is Peyton Tessier, and I'm also in 11th grade.
My name's Montgomery Lanier, and I am in 12th grade.
My name is Bella Marshwin, and I am in 12th grade.
My name is Samantha Davis, and I'm in 11th grade.
My name is Gwyneth Powell, and I'm a senior.
My name's Lawson Pollock Curry, and I'm in 11th grade.
My name's Alan Studer Baker. I'm a junior.
I've got to say, that was one of the best run additions I've ever heard. So would you please join me in another round of applause? Thank you all very much for being here tonight.
The, I received an email that folks are having difficulty hearing some of our board members, so perhaps we can make sure our microphones are on and we are talking into them close enough to our mouths.
Okay. Everyone will please be cognizant of that. I would appreciate it. We're going to continue on with the approval of the minutes. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes?
Mr. Chairman, I could not, I could not open the minutes from 3:26 or 3:12, and right now, they're still spinning. It's been spinning for me since, I think, Friday. So I would make a motion to approve the minutes from 3:06 and 3:21, but not the other two.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second that for the same reason.
Same reason, okay. All right. Any further discussion? Not all in favor of approving, could you repeat those dates because I did not write them?
Um, 3:21, 3:6, 24, and 3:21, 24.
Okay. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed? Passes seven zero. We'll continue on with the recognitions. Come on up.
Sorry. Good evening. We once again have some wonderful students and staff recognitions to share. The first up is Angela Jeffrey. A few months ago, we recognized Angela for being a finalist for the North Carolina Outstanding Teacher of the Gifted Award, and we are thrilled tonight to share that she won. She is in expert opinion the finest AIG educator in the state, and this is our second year in a row that NHCS has had a teacher claim that title, and our AIG team was recently named a promising district by the DPI. As AIG coordinator, Angela helps gifted students at Laney and New Hanover find challenge, enrichment, opportunity, and connection. She ensures that they get the differentiated curriculum they need, but she also matches them with opportunities to lead and grow beyond the classroom, like governor's school, study abroad, or space camp. And just as importantly, Angela works as an active talent scout, finding students with gifts they may not even recognize themselves. Angela serves more than 600 students, but excels at seeing the strengths and possibilities in each of them. In her nomination letter, Supervisor Maureen Mahan wrote that Angela actively seeks out students in underserved populations to work with, and that she collaborates with teachers to ensure learning environments challenge and inspire her students. Thank you, Angela, for your exemplary service, and congratulations. Next up is the Laney Buccaneers Cheer Team. They're unfortunately not able to be here tonight, but we still want to recognize them. They took home the NCCCA Division One State Championship in their category, a first in school history. Most of the 19 young women on this team had never even competed at the high school level, and the Laney Cheer Team hadn't been in competition at all for several years. But last spring, Coaches Nikki Little, Jamie Green, and Sarah Zucolmaglio became determined to get the Bucks back on the blue mat. The team was assembled in May, and they practiced all summer long. They cheered on the football team in the fall and the basketball team in the winter, all while refining their competition routine, and at the end of January, were crowned state champs. Watching their routines, what strikes you is not just the athleticism of back handsprings and jumping splits, it's how interconnected they are and how much trust that takes. Standing on one foot, eight feet in the air, balancing on just the hands of your teammates, with a big smile on your face, or being flipped through the air and knowing your teammates will have to catch you, that takes an incredible amount of teamwork, strength, and the absolute faith that I've got your back and you've got mine. The motto of NCCCA is "Where Spirit and Sport Come Together," and we can see that not only do these Buccaneers emblemize the sportsmanship we hope for in all student athletes, but they have the true spirit of teamwork as well. Join me in congratulating the Varsity Buccaneers Cheer Team. Next up is Allison Wine. Allison is a behavioral specialist with our pre-K program, and she was named the smart start of New Hanover County 2024 Children's Champion. Being a champion of children is a little different than being a champion in other realms. There is no title or trophy. It means you're doing the quiet work of providing opportunity for and nurturing the gifts of our youngest, most vulnerable students. As a behavior specialist, Allison helps teachers set up classrooms based on research on the neuroscience and socially emotional lives of toddlers. She identifies children who might need additional support in order to be happy and successful at school, and she helps these three- and four-year-olds learn to name the feelings they're feeling and give some self-regulation strategies so that their brains can calm down and learn. She said, quote, "Our goal in pre-K is to set the foundation for school and learning so that children can feel safe, loved, and their brains can be built. It takes only one caring adult in a child's life to make a difference. We are fortunate to have this skilled, caring champion for children serving in New Hanover County schools." And Allison was unable to be here tonight because she's coaching a game, but please join me in congratulating her now. All right, tonight, we have the privilege of recognizing two very fine basketball teams on their monumental seasons. The New Hanover High School Boys Team were NCHSA East Regional Champions and ended their season with a 32-to-1 record and the first appearance at a title game since 2012. Yep, you can. The Hoggard Girls Basketball Team also had an epic season, earning a conference championship and ending their run in the Final Four with a 30-to-2 record. And while we know that you wish those final games would have ended with a different outcome, we are celebrating how far you did get and that you left nothing on the court, that you were in the arena in every way, with your head, with your heart, with your team. And I'll say what I used to say to my own son after a game, win or lose, we loved watching you play. We loved packing the rafters at Brogdon Hall. We loved that shutter-down home game upset over Southview. We loved sending you off with school parades. We loved caravanning to Winston-Salem. We loved packing any venue in town that would stream the game so that we could watch you play together. You represented not just your schools, but your community with grit and a believe in your, a belief in yourself that defied seeds or brackets. You put us on the map for all the right reasons. You made your community proud. And we're proud of you for your perseverance and perspective. As Hanover Junior Rod McAllen put it, "We knew every game was going to be a battle. We knew we had to stay level-headed and stay pounding and just be us, and we'll be just fine." And I can't think of a better lesson to apply from sports to life. So congratulations again to both teams. First, we'd like to welcome the New Hanover Boys Basketball Team and coaches to accept And finally, we get to recognize seven students from each of our high schools who have been awarded the State Employees Credit Union People Helping People Scholarship. This $10,000 scholarship recognizes students from SECU families who not only have demonstrated scholastic achievement, but also have shown leadership, excellence of character, integrity, and community involvement. SECU Foundation established the People Helping People Scholarship to help North Carolina public high school students attend college. Each of you has shown not only that you can be successful in high school, but that you have the confidence, curiosity, and character to soar into higher ed learning. We can't wait to see where you go from here. Congratulations to you all. First is Shania Hunt from Ashley High School. We'll, we'll do each one. All right. All right. Next is Rebecca Shook of Isaac Bear Early College. Emily Radford of New Hanover High School. All right. And Abigail Witkowski of Wilmington Early College High School.
All right, before we move on to student voice, we have one more recognition. Ms. Bradford?
Mr. Chairman, with your indulgence, I would like to recognize the passing of a New Hanover County school employee. His name was Asa O. Brown, who passed into heaven March 17th of this year. He was born and raised in Friendship Community of Rocky Point. He graduated from Burgart School in 1970, so voice is much older than even me. He attended A&amp;T University from 1970 to his graduation in 1974. The following year, he attended Virginia Tech in Blacksburg, Virginia to work on his master's degree. Before returning to North Carolina, he was employed as a coordinator for the Rowan Oak Consortium for Manpower Services. Back home, Asa was employed as a consultant on the planning commission for the tri-counties, New Hanover, Pender, and Brunswick County. He ran unsuccessfully for county commission in 1990. Asa Brown was an extremely well-read, gentle man who cherished his conversations with others. He also worked for the New Hanover County Schools for 18 years, from August 2002 all the way to November of 2022. And for the last several years of that, he was, well, he was a bus monitor, but he transported exceptional children. So join me in honoring and celebrating the life of this kind man, Asa O. Brown.
Same, Ms. Bradford. We will continue on with our student voice. Student voice? Oh, I'm sorry. One second, student voice.
I apologize.
And now, we are ready for student voice. We were just getting you warmed up that last time. April Fools.
Good evening, members of the board and spectators. My name is Molly Mathis, and I'm a junior at Hoggard, and I'm here with some of my peers, Salmon and Cassidy, to explore a recent topic and project we've discussed on the student ambassador team. Class rank and whether it's a really accurate measurement of academic performance due to the variety of factors that can affect it. In the midst of college acceptance season, this topic captured the interest of many students. We've interviewed a wide range of students and educators to gain the best understanding of the current class rank system that we have in place. We would like to begin with a few key research findings. According to the American Psychological Association, the emphasis on class rank not only harms student mental health, but also fosters excessive competitiveness in high schools. The College Board's research supports that the advanced placement courses are crucial for college readiness. Yet, the undue focus on GPA and class rank discourages students from enrolling in these academically enriching courses. Similarly, the Association for Career and Technical Education, ACTE, has highlighted how career and technical education programs significantly boost student engagement and the likelihood of graduating on time. However, the current GPA weighting system deters students from pursuing CTE, especially introductory CTE courses, which are a foundation for these programs. They do not carry the same weight as AP or IB courses, potentially jeopardizing students' class ranks.
We also wanted to bring awareness to the uncomfortable fact that, yes, students with more privilege are at a high advantage when it comes to being ranked. For example, I personally went to a private middle school, which provides students a head start because they can gain credits before entering high school and thus get pushed farther ahead in the system. Having access to these higher-weighted classes earlier on has put me at the top of my class, while my public school friends, Frances Cassidy, who might have maintained all As, still could never catch up to me in the ranking. Moreover, this system's pressure has led me to forego classes that align with my genuine interests, like entrepreneurship, for fear of impacting my GPA negatively. Why do we need a system that inadvertently encourages students to shy away from their personal interests and potentially life-changing experiences? Furthermore, the narrative that a single numeric rank can encapsulate a student's academic journey is increasingly being questioned by the universities, the higher education universities themselves. According to College Board and the National Association for College Admission Counseling, an evolving trend among colleges and universities an evolving trend among colleges and universities shows a diminishing emphasis on class rank as a criterion for admission, as they also understand that there is more to a student's capabilities, character, and potential than an inaccurate class rank.
I'll also share from my own personal experience. I have played with the Hogard Orchestra for four years, but it was a big decision deciding whether or not I was going to continue to play in the orchestra because there isn't an AP music class, and I knew that would set me behind in class rank. And many of my peers, unfortunately, decided to quit their music classes once they entered high school just because they were worried about their class rank and how it would appear. And for colleges, they wanted to give themselves the best chance to succeed. So our conversations and interviews across the county have shown that while some students feel neutral about the class rank system as it is, many students feel boxed in by the current system, and there's a growing desire for alternatives that honor diverse talents and efforts more holistically. While we know it is mandated by the state to report class rank, we have also seen many cities have proposed bills that offer alternatives. For instance, the North Carolina School of Science and Math, as reported by WRAL, is exempt from this law and chooses not to report class rank on their students' transcripts. Similarly, Raleigh Charter High School found a way to comply with state requirements, yet bypasses class rank by blacking it out on transcripts. With all this in mind, we just wanted to open up this discussion of the system and consider some of the alternatives that other school systems have proposed. For example, the Latin Honor System and the adoption of ties and ranking are potential alternatives that could foster a more collaborative and supportive academic environment. We will be continuing our research on this topic, and we would love to be pointed in the right direction of who to contact to research this issue and potentially viable alternatives. So, thank you. We just wanted to open up this conversation. It's something we've been talking about a lot as a team, and we'd love to talk about it with you all more. So, thank you.
Thank you, board members. If anything, any questions or comments? Ms. Walker, I see your hand up.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I have questions, and I had a daughter in school that had the same issue as you guys did. Like, what do you take? You take a lower weighted class, and that affect your GPA? Because at the end, it was all a race to who was top 10 and all that. And while I do think it's kind of good for competition, at the same time, it is a little unfair. So would you mind sending us your information, and maybe we can reply back with some thoughts on how we can look at that? Because I think it's very stressful when you get to your senior status and you're looking at college. If other systems are doing it, I don't see why we couldn't look at that. I mean, it'll help with stress, and I don't know how.
Ms. Crable?
Yeah, I just had a, and you sort of mentioned it a little bit when you were talking about the stress. When you were talking with your peers, did it appear to you that we were having like a mental health strain that they needed to, you know, maybe seek counseling? Or they talked with their counselor a little more than they might not normally have because trying to grapple with all those issues? Or maybe even parent issues? Because parents go, and you will take this because you will be number one, sort of thing? Did you come across that in any of your research?
Yeah, so we interviewed students from every school, and we found that most students, it is a stress point for a lot of students, and students that worked a regular job throughout the school year were less likely to say that they were enthusiastic about taking AP or IB classes, or dual enrollment even, just because of the workload that they already have. But yeah, I would say that most of the people that we interviewed, especially at the traditional public schools, it was a point of like stress because there's also not a lot of information about like what colleges consider important in regards to like, it kind of changes year by year and at different universities. So, yeah. But I would say that in our research, we found that it is a stress point for a lot of high schoolers.
Mr. McManus?
This has been around forever, and I totally agree with you. And being on the board, I didn't bring it up myself, but now that you brought it up, I'm glad you did. Thank you. It's probably something we do need to discuss. And I'll just leave it with saying, we look at the kids at the bottom, and we give them great opportunities, and we pass a lot of kids, but to punish the kids at the top because of probably an archaic policy. Dr. Faust, you may want to address this, but that is something that we can address, is it not?
Oh, I, that's, I'm not sure if that's, it's probably, obviously, I have to check and see if we can get back with you.
Okay. I think it is.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. I like how you guys were able to actually talk about some of the alternatives of talking about having ties and rankings. And I wrote down the Latin Honor System as that, those are the two you referenced. So when we have further discussion, as Mr. McManus said, those are going to be, when you're looking to change something, it has to go towards something. So that'll, thank you for bringing those up, and thank you for your guys' presentation.
And I will say that, you know, I remember years ago, my son was in a similar situation, and he wanted, he wanted to take oceanography. He wanted to take oceanography, but he looked at his GPA, and he said, but I also want to be number one. So, you know, it's either or instead of, you know, this is a great opportunity. So it is something I think we can discuss. So, thank you for your time. Thank you so much for being here today. At this point, I'd like to welcome Rebecca Long, pre-K teacher at College Road Early Childhood Center, and she will be speaking as part of our monthly Teacher Voice. So, Ms. Long. Is she here? Ms. Long, are you here? Okay. We will carry on. Maybe we had a little mix-up there? One last call, Ms. Long. No, no, Ms. Long. Okay. Well, we'll carry on with our superintendent's report. Dr. Faust.
Welcome back. Last week was National Assistant Principals Week. That was April 1st through the 5th. This month is School Library Month, and we will be celebrating our media coordinators and all they do to support literacy for our students. April is also National Volunteer Month, month of the Military Child, National Child Abuse Prevention Month. Exemplary Professional Development System Award. We have a strong working relationship with UNCW, Watson College of Education. An important piece of that is our school relationship partnership. Last month, this program won recognition from the National Association of School/University Partnerships, and representatives from our schools and UNCW accepted the award in California. New Hanover County Schools in NC DPI recognition. Last week, I was able to present at the State Board of Education about our principal coaching model that we are piloting for DPI. Many districts have programs like these that pair retired principals and principals at low-performing schools. However, ours is different. The state-funded program provides principals in our low-performing schools the opportunity to be paired with a highly effective principal across the state who leads a school with similar demographics. We were asked to share this because our district is the only district in the state to have this opportunity. Why? Because we came up with this idea. It's innovative, and it's having such a big impact across the state. While there were also, while I was there, we also received State Board of Education recognition from the Office of Early Learning for our Champion of Change Literacy Award. And in the same week, we learned that DPI put us on the promising practice map for the state for our reading instruction. As you know, our new science-based reading curriculum is bringing amazing results to our reading scores. We're extremely proud of the work that our educators and staff are bringing the change to New Hanover County Schools. New Hanover County Schools received the first-ever YMCA Impact Award for Partner of the Year. New Hanover County Schools became the first district in the part of the state also to alter flag football to our women athletes. Ashley, Hogard, Laney, and New Hanover High Schools competed in their first match. Congratulations to Hogard High School in being named both a Unified Banner School and a member of the ESPN Honor Roll last month. Also, happy birthday to Alderman Elementary School. They are six years old.
All right.
May I ask that, Director Faust, to be honest, for the May Agenda briefing, I mean, showing where we're in full compliance with a couple of laws that have just changed, haven't heard anything in a while, the Parents' Rights and the Students' Fairness in Women's Sports, and getting accounting.
Crable?
Yeah, I, the, I'm happy to have Dr. Faust give us that report, but the people on the senior staff, you know, are responsible for that, and our legal counsel can help keep us up to date on those kind of things as well.
May I ask?
Yes.
So, when you said, would you like to see about that?
Would please need to know that we are in complete compliance with what's been locked down?
So, is there something tangible that you'd like to see? No, no, no. I'm saying, is there something tangible that you want to see? Okay, okay, okay. Yes.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. I'll carry on with the chairman's report. Another busy month. I hope you enjoyed your spring break. For those of you who celebrate Easter, had a wonderful holiday. For those of you who celebrate, will celebrate Passover, I hope you will have an outstanding Holy Day. And for those of you who celebrate Ramadan, I hope you had a happy Ramadan. Azalea Festival was outstanding, and the weather is and was perfect. As Dr. Faust mentioned, New Hanover County Schools received an award for our business partnership with YMCA Impact Award. I want to thank my fellow board members who joined me to accept the award. Thanks also to my fellow board members who joined me as we completed our Center for Creative Leadership Training. It was outstanding. It was three-day training, and we had day three on March 22nd. It was great to work together with other members of the board on this training. Several of us also attended the CAALN training on Lunch and Learn on Restorative Justice or Discipline held on March 15th. We will continue to have discussions with our partners, the county commissioners, in ways to fund our schools, so we'll be able to continue to improve the education for all of our students. As I mentioned in the agenda review, I have to say one more time how wonderful the Best Foot Forward was. We have wonderfully talented students, and we just heard some more of them today as they sang, in New Hanover County Schools, and that is for sure. So, very, very pleased about that. And finally, as we return from spring break, we need to focus on ending our school year on a positive note. As a former principal, I remember how important this time of the year is, the final sprint to the finish line. So, looking forward to some great, a great last month, and months, excuse me, and also finishing up on a very high note. At this point, we will turn, and we will begin our call to the audience. Ms. Mason, if you will take. Okay. Just, by the way, we will need a short closed session. I did not mention that before, as I thought I was going to.
All right. We're going to start off with Peter Rowich.
Oh, my goodness. Here we go. I like it.
The Policy Committee is meeting here next week. They'll talk about due process and review. If parents should have the right to ask questions for their kids, that's just five, six, and seven-year-olds, well, here is something easy we're sure principals can do. Call them before you decide. Call before you make a decision. How is aggressive behavior defined? Was it a major or minor infraction? Before you use the last resort, tell them other strategies you have tried. We know suspensions harm our kids, so call them before you decide. Policy 304351 is all about short-term suspensions. It's really written for the older kids. Now give the young ones your attention. We want principals to delay before they have their final say. After they've talked to a child and the facts are compiled, have them call a parent right away. Yes, call them before you decide. Call before you make a decision. How is aggressive behavior defined? Was it a major or minor infraction? Before you use the last resort, tell them other strategies you have tried. We know suspensions harm our kids, so call them before you decide. Call them before you decide.
Thank you. Chris Sutton.
I can't beat that song. That's rough to come up behind. That's... So in 2019, the previous superintendent was suspended without pay after intimidating a community member by reaching out to his boss. Now in 2024, the current superintendent decided to forward three emails from community members to someone outside the school system, who in turn looked through the workplace website of one of these people, copied a link to their inclusion policy, and pasted it in an email back to the superintendent while alluding to considering sending an email to their boss. Imagine if he's doing this to community members. Imagine what he's doing to staff members that speak out. You take part in something that intimidates community members, then you should have to answer for it, just like the previous superintendent did. I believe it needs to be public. We've been waiting. There's some of the victims here in this room, and they've sent emails, and they've not even heard anything back. And let's not pull the political card. This superintendent has fought with board members on both sides of the aisle even before this new majority came in. He also fought with, or intimidated some of our community members on both sides of the aisle. For instance, we had the incident with, what, Matt Coyle and Angie Caney, where he tried to have them charged, went to the sheriff's office. DA declined to take out charges. He's intimidated numerous times. We get to see his email trail. Remember, he said that I intimidated someone by asking a simple question before. He has a long history of this, and this is yet another incident. To date, I don't know if there's ever been any investigation into the superintendent. I think that the community deserves transparency with this, especially with our past, and multiple times we've been told that our culture of retaliation, our culture of cover-ups are gone. We're not receiving answers for this. The board all understands what we're going through right now. The victims are here, here in this room, two of them, and I spoke to the third. He sent an email that our community's not allowed to see. It's completely redacted, and he sent it to someone outside of our district. Explain that to us. Explain why we still don't have that email.
Thank you, Mr. Sutton.
Leslie Posey.
Okay. Now that I have your attention, I want to talk about paying attention. You regularly discuss how students don't pay attention in class, problems with constant use of phones and other issues. Those decisions are part of your job. Another part of your job is being responsive to the community. You have allotted us one hour a month to speak to you. In many cases, that's all we get. Some of you have said on that dais, you don't have time to read the emails we send you. So, this two minutes a month is all we get. You are supposed to be public servants and listen to us as we demand solutions to our school budget, saving school-based staff, and other issues. Quit looking at the paperwork for later in the meeting. That is supposed to be homework. Start putting your focus where it is supposed to be, right here at this podium. Thank you.
Barbara Garro.
Thanks. At the March 19th Policy Committee meeting, Mrs. Bradford mentioned that so far this year, there were 13 K through 2nd grade out-of-school suspensions from serious offenses. Dr. Faust said he wasn't sure where the number 13 came from. The number 13 came from the K through 2 out-of-school suspensions data provided by the Office of Communications and Outreach. Based on the violation coding from August 23 to February 24, only 13 Based on the violation coding from August 23 to February 24, only 13 K through second suspensions were from serious offenses. A week earlier, I read a speech from this very podium and cited the number 13. So did two other speakers. Sometimes it feels like we're not being heard. Why is that? Later, during the Policy Committee meeting, we learned that 49 of this year's suspensions that have been coded as minor offenses were in fact, based on audit, serious offenses. The miscoded offenses from the past two years are reason enough to have a principal call a K to second grade parent before they decide to suspend a child. That way, a parent can learn if their child was involved with a minor offense or a serious offense and how it would be coded. Revise Policy 4351 and have principals call a parent before their five, six, seven-year-old child is kicked out of school. Thank you.
Jeanette Koschar.
I am Jeanette Koschar, a retired university professor, mother of two children, grandmother to five, and great-grandmother to one. I ask you, what should school policies decisions be based upon? Board Policy 2400 is about board policies. It states, "All policy decisions will be made while keeping in mind the board's objective to provide students with the opportunity to receive a sound, basic education." Therefore, should a policy decision be based on whether or not a student's parent has a phone that works? No, a working phone should not be the basis for establishing a policy. Should a policy decision be based on whether a translator can be found for a parent who doesn't speak English? No, again, availability of a translator should not be the basis for establishing a policy. Policies should be based on what will keep our children in school, learning, and thriving. At the March 19th Policy Committee meeting, an elementary school principal said that implementing a revised short-term suspension policy would be very, very difficult. Fortunately, she didn't say it would be impossible. Principals have a difficult decision to make when they are determining if the behavior of a five, six, or seven-year-old warrants a suspension. I am making this request, please revise Policy 4351 so that K, a K to, K first second parent will receive a call from a principal before he or she decides to suspend a child. If principals deem parental involvement is important, then they will not let the logistics of including a parent stand in the way of this important decision. Principals are bright and dedicated professionals, I am sure they are capable of working on their concerns about phones and translators at their monthly meetings. Thank you.
Thank you. Judy Justice. Mark Allen, Emma Whitehead. Okay, Veronica McLaurin Brown.
Thank you, Ms. Mason, for putting short-term suspension policy 43151 on the agenda at last month's Policy Committee meeting. And a special thanks to Ms. Bradford, Ms. Mason, and Mr. Vogel for understanding the precise nature of Love Our Children's requests. We are requesting that you revise Policy 4351 so that kindergarten to second-grade parents will receive a phone call from the principal before a decision to suspend is finalized. We understand and respect the principal's authority to suspend students. However, we are advocating for a simple change in the policy, a change that invites, encourages, and celebrates parental involvement. The revision does not mandate or require parental presence. Principals retain their authority to decide on out-of-school suspensions without a parent being present. Do you believe building positive relationships with parents is important for successful schools? Do you believe parents deserve the right to advocate for their children? Do you believe five, six, and seven-year-olds deserve every opportunity, opportunity to stay in school where they can learn and thrive? Well, one single phone call can help build positive relationships with parents. One single phone call can increase the number of days that students are in school, learning, and thriving. One single phone call can be a crucial step in breaking the vicious cycle of the school-to-prison pipeline. Love Our Children is simply asking you to embrace the transformative power of a single phone call, to empower parent voices, and to foster an environment where our children thrive.
Thank you. Lindsay Phillips. Lindsay Phillips. Loretta Stackhouse.
Dr. Faust invited the members of the Policy Committee to attend the principals' meeting on April 11. He wants them to better understand short-term suspensions and due process from their perspective. Here are some questions I hope the committee members will ask the elementary principals. Which positive, positive behavior support alternatives are you using in your school with kindergarteners, first and second-grade students who display challenging behaviors? Which positive behavior support alternatives have you found to be the most effective with your youngest learners? How many different positive behavior support alternatives are used with five, six, and seven-year-olds before an out-of-school suspension is used as a last resort? Under the current short-term suspension policy, what do you do when you're ready to notify a K to second-grade parent when their child is being suspended and you're unable to reach them by phone? What do you do when the parent doesn't speak English and you don't have a translator? If you made that phone call before you've decided to suspend the child, how would you handle this being unable to reach the parent or needing a translator? I suspect the principals would deal with both of these issues the same way they're dealing with them now. Revise Policy 4351, have a principal call a parent before he decides to suspend a K to second-grade student.
Thank you. Natasha Tu. Natasha Tu.
Running to be in the seat that you guys are sitting in, and I'm here to speak today about school safety. However, what I find astounding is rather than this board or the superintendent be focused on our school safety after two loaded guns being found at our schools in the past month or so, he's more interested in finding ways to retaliate against a concerned citizen that speaks out vocally against him. This is America, is it not, still, for the remaining time? Free speech is awarded to us and it is one of our foundational rights. I find it just outstanding and outrageous, rather than focus on the true problems that are in our schools and facing our teachers and students, you would rather find ways to retaliate against people that don't think the same way that you do. I don't know if our parents, I don't know if our students are aware of the increase of acts of crime and violence within our schoolhouses, it's not just in our county, it's across the state, and it's across the nation. There seems to be a lack of serious consequences facing our students. I don't know if it's just restorative justice, I don't know if it can be pinned on one thing, but I know if we don't get a handle on it now, we're gonna lose all the great teachers we have left that haven't already left, and good luck recruiting anybody that wants to deal with kids that are unmanageable, that are not disciplined, and that don't know what serious consequences are. They deserve better, this country deserves better, they are worth fighting, they deserve, kids thrive in structure, as educators, we all know that, as parents, we all know that. It seems like there is a serious lack of structure, not just for our students, but for administration, and there should be some more accountability.
Thank you. Christina Mercer.
As I was preparing this month's speech, I reread the speech I'd given in June 2022. While the ask was slightly different, I want you to hear again what I said about the school system and commissioners working together. Regretfully, I have to say that from conversations I've had with people who contacted the commissioners, most got no response or a response from one commissioner that was entirely unhelpful and discouraging. My question is this, why are the county commissioners so disassociated from the needs of the school system? Why are they insisting that funding the schools would mean an increase in taxes? Many entities must appeal to them for funding, why is it the public schools who bear the burden of being the reason for a tax increase? Right now, you're probably thinking, why isn't she asking the county commissioners these questions? This is my answer, you are the entity who applied for your budget to be funded. Did you advocate with the commissioners to fully fund the budget? Have you invited them to visit schools? Are you facilitating regular meetings between the commissioners and educators and support staff? Are you creating an ongoing working relationship between the commissioners and the school system, or is there an adversarial relationship except when it's time to submit a budget request? That is what I said two years ago, and it appears not only has nothing changed, but apparently the relationship and communication between the superintendent, school board, and county commissioners has gotten worse. Therefore, I have some new questions. How can you be a leader in public education, yet refuse to advocate for students and teachers? Why is it okay to settle for the state's minimum standard when it comes to staffing, yet when it comes to test scores, you expect our students to exceed the minimum? If you truly love education, you cannot continue to allow our schools to suffer. We need teachers and staff. Nothing else can replace qualified and caring adults in the schools, they are essential for success. Students get one chance at an education. Advocate, fight for them.
Thank you, Ms. Mercer, your time is up. Thank you, your time is up. Karen Clark.
We just need Jesus. Ronald Reagan, if we ever forget that we are one nation under God, then we will be a nation gone under. Joe, the fear of the Lord is true wisdom, to forsake evil is real understanding. Jesus, the living word, I am the way, the truth, and the life. George Washington, it is impossible to rightly govern without God and the Bible. James Madison, the future and success of America are found in the laws of God upon which our Constitution was founded. John Adams, we recognize no sovereign but God, and no king but Jesus. Grover Cleveland, the receptions of the teachings of Christ result in the purest patriotism, the most scrupulous fidelity to the public trust, and the best type of citizenship. I pray you walk in total integrity, walking in the light of God's Word. He has prescribed the right way to live, to obey His laws with all your heart, to live in the Word of God, walking in His truth. His commandments are your counselors, and His Word your light. I pray He opens your understanding to the ways of wisdom and gives you revelation to make good decisions for our children, that you have an understanding heart so you can passionately know and obey His truth. I decree, New Hanover County Schools reflect our state motto as originally intended, to be rather than to seem, bringing true justice and righteousness to our schools in Jesus' name. For yours is the kingdom, yours is the power, yours is the glory, amen.
Thank you. Reverend Kelly Wheat Rivers.
I'm Kelly Wheat Rivers, the Associate Minister for the Unitarian Universalist Congregation of Wilmington. I'm a local hospice chaplain, a member of Love Our Children, and a mother of a second grader in New Hanover County. I'm here to speak about the short-term suspension policy 4351, which includes a section on the pre-suspension rights of a student. These include the right to make statements in their defense, the right to request that the principal hear from other people, and the right to request additional time to present those people. Does this list sound like something a five, six, or seven-year-old could do? I ask because the policy also states that a student, quote, "does not have the right to a parent or other representative present at the informal meeting." I understand that principals talk to children all the time without parents being present, it's part of their job. All Love Our Children is asking for is let a parent or guardian know, let them receive a phone call from a principal before a decision is made to suspend a student in kindergarten, first grade, and second grade. May we love our children, advocate for them, and celebrate their childhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Katie Gates.
A school board can be used as an instrument of righteousness to restore traditional values for success. Psalm 34:15 says, "The eyes of the Lord are on the righteous, and his ears are attentive to their cry." I ask you to remember back to grade school when we had a healthy fear of discipline from teachers, of parents, and of the principal, and of making poor grades. People weren't offended, maybe had hurt feelings, but the phrase, "Sticks and stones may break my bones, but names will never hurt me," was prevalent. We were told to suck it up and we're probably better for it. For the first 200 years of education in our nation, there was prayer in schools. We had spring concerts and sang patriotic songs honoring our American heritage. Students looked forward to eighth and 12th grade field trips to Washington, DC. Kids were happier, healthier, and productive. The pledge was spoken and kids wouldn't dare think of sitting down or recusing themselves, except for a handful of religiously exempt students, which is their prerogative. God, family, and country were honored. These were, there were not epidemics of failing students, gender dysphoria, depression, suicidal tendencies, nor viewpoint discrimination in politicized classrooms, nor did we see a generation of indulged students embracing socialism and Marxist ideologies fed to them through the ALA, publishing companies, and the education system. Board, as you cut the budget and simplify programming, please embrace godly and moral values upon which this nation and liberty has thrived, teach history from primary sources not from a deconstructionist and revisionist perspective, replace some paid counselors with volunteer chaplains as they're doing in Texas, put the Acts to CRT and DEI programming as University of Texas has, as Oklahoma schools have. There are currently more than 30 bills across the country targeting DEI funding, including North Carolina, 27 states ban CRT. Now is your chance to reset our trajectory in righteousness. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gates. Lisa Goff.
You're an elected official, so you're in a light, a spotlight, and people are watching what you say and what you do, you're accountable to many, but you're also accountable to God, who sees everything and knows your thoughts and motives. There are things God hates, lying, a proud look, the spirit that makes one overestimate himself and underestimate others, murderers, deception, impressions that aren't true. I want to thank you for laying down your lives for this board. It's a lot of hours, I see it, it's a lot of hard work, you're on other committees, you have staff that works hard too. And I just think that you don't forget your why, why you were elected, why you ran, because it was all good. And I'd have to say that I don't like big education, it's so corporate, I get lost in all the minutia. So I would have to say that defund big ed and see who stays. Stays for the kids, right, not for the money. Thank you.
Thank you. Angie Kehney.
Why do kids bring guns to school? Because they aren't safe there. When schools are significantly overcapacity and understaffed with a toxic prison culture, ignoring the worry of safety is not an option. Two weeks ago, a loaded weapon was found at Laney and was quickly dismissed, with decades of sexual assault ignored. Despite glaring warning signs, it's not surprising. There's zero research to support the narrative that more cops on campus yields safer schools. There is substantial evidence to support the fact that social-emotional learning programs and restorative justice practices implemented with fidelity do create safer schools. Evidence-based prevention programs, adequate space, and adequately trained education and mental health staff reduce school violence. Strategies laid out in the settlement plan from the recent sexual assault cases define provisions that address safety. Our district intentionally ignores them, while our board attacks reputable prevention programs, and Faust continues to cut positions and viable resources. The most recent attack falls on the Family Life Program that teaches sex education and prevention and addresses building healthy relationships and setting boundaries. This directly falls under the parameters of the settlement in keeping students safe. If cut, the required parts of the curriculum would fall on other untrained and already overburdened staff members to teach. We would go from having a Family Life Program that most of the state envies to losing key components of that program that directly impact our students and have proven a decline in teenage pregnancy. A repeat mistake of the costly destruction of eliminating our Title IX department. The district is dishonest in saying these positions are central office positions. They are not. These teachers teach students directly. Cut central office positions that cater to the superintendent, who makes about five times a teacher's salary, but to cut student-facing educators, mental health counselors, EC, prevention programs, and even district student support staff would be detrimental to the safety and well-being of our students.
Thank you, Ms. Cane. David Perry.
Good evening. Margaret Thatcher once noted that the problem with socialism is that eventually you run out of other people's money. And Dr. Faust recently came to this school board and asked you to approve a free school breakfast program with a $1.3 million grant for all of our 25,000 students. He said that this would cure and alleviate the problem of students who are going hungry and would cost the school district nothing. But as usual, he did not tell you the whole story. You see, the ongoing cost of providing this free breakfast for all is subject to the community eligibility provision, which mandates that we are only going to get reimbursed for the ongoing costs for the percentage of people in our county that are eligible for SNAP or TANF benefits. I fear that we are going to be on the hook for millions of dollars in the coming years because of this program. This kind of quick and rash decision is the same thing that got us in trouble and why we have a $20 million shortfall now. Our previous school board thought it was a good idea to fund permanent positions with temporary S.R. money. Bad idea. If we were doing that in our own personal finances, we'd be in bankruptcy court or jail. The fact is, we need to make financial priorities. We need to focus on our education, providing a top-notch education, and making sure that we have highly qualified teachers. We are a school system. We are not a welfare agency. So therefore, I would ask you to reconsider this program. That doesn't mean you don't care. Go to county leaders. Go to charitable organizations with our county. Think outside of the box before we devise another socialist program that we cannot afford to maintain. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Perry. Diane Zericki.
Good evening, everyone. Unfortunately, the situation here continues to get worse and not better. What we have is an employee that you hired who is not working for you. He's working against you. To listen and hear that senior management made the decision to close the career readiness program at Mosley is a direct slap in the face to all seven of you. When Hugh McManus asked how long this had been in the works, Faust replied, "2021." Then he gets in front of the media and says he did give you proper notice, because in November, he gave you 20 days' notice to the letter going out to the parents that he was closing their program and they had to find another school. It's unacceptable. I'm a business owner. You hire slow and you fire quick. When you have poison inside your organization, you get rid of it. This is a bipartisan issue. There was not one person standing up in favor of that program being closed and of a welcome center going into its place. There is a trend here of a lack of respect for the Constitution of our country and for the freedom of speech. We saw this back in July of 2021, when he went to the sheriff's department, and he pressed harassment and intimidation charges against two people who spoke at a public forum. The sheriff correctly determined that they have the freedom of speech and dropped the charges. But that is completely unacceptable behavior. Most recently, several emails were sent to the board, and he in turn forwarded them to Linda Thompson, Chief Equity and Diversity Officer, who is not with the Board of Education. Dr. Faust, this is doxing, and it is illegal. You do not forward this information onto people outside of the realm it was sent to. And unfortunately, this is just the tip of the iceberg. We've asked for public comment, to no avail. You guys have a decision to make. You either do something disciplinary, including termination, or you stand complicit with it.
Sam Merrick.
Good evening. Nice to see you again. I'll try to be a calmer voice for you tonight. You've told us that we have a $20 million shortfall if we are to hold steady at last year's staffing and operational levels. But, you know, even last year, we were woefully understaffed if we wanted to keep our children safe in the classroom and in our schools. And I hear that you only want to ask for 4.5 million from the county. I'm confused. Are you willing to absorb $15.5 million from our budget? These aren't just numbers. You're talking about putting our children at risk for their physical safety and their mental health. Because you don't want to ask for more? You don't want to ask for what our children need? I watched one of your budget sessions recently, and a few of you said, oh, you know, we have to be really careful about what we ask the county, and, you know, we can't ask for too much. And I say, why on earth not? Why won't we ask for what we need? I mean, aren't we all committed to the same things here? I would think that the county commissioners also want to see our children being educated well. I would like to see our kids go to school excited, come home happy. They should be safe, and they should get a sound education, something that will help them to succeed in life, do better than their families have in the past, and they can do that if we do the hard work of fighting for what they need. I understand the commissioners might not agree, but you have to ask, or you won't get. And really, where will it end? Unless we elect a different state legislature, it will be even worse next year, with more voucher money going and more crumbling in overcrowded schools, larger class sizes, and yes, more fights. Our children depend on you to do what needs to be done to keep our children safe and give them a quality education. Please, go get the funding.
Thank you. Stephen Exum.
Good evening. Tonight's call to the audience started with a song from Love Our Children, another Pete classic. But it also had, it's a catchy tune, but with a very specific plan. "We want the principals to delay before they have their final say. After they talk to the child and the facts are compiled, have them call the parent right away." So first, a principal gets to do the required due process by talking to the children involved in an incident and getting the facts. Then they, then they, then they call the parent of a kindergarten, first, or second-grade student and ask any questions or concerns that they might have. And finally, then, the principal makes a decision. But the most important line in the song was, "We know suspensions harm our kids. We know suspensions harm our kids." Policy 4351 should be about our children. We must do everything we can to keep our kids in school where they can learn and thrive. Allowing parents to speak to a principal before a determination is made to suspend a five, six, or seven-year-old just makes sense. What parent wouldn't want that for their kids? Revised policy 4351, currently, principals call parents after they decide to kick a young learner out of school. So have them make the call earlier, as the song says, "Call them before you decide."
All right, last call for Judy Justice. I don't see her. Mark Allen Emma Whitehead. And Lindsey Phillips. That concludes our call to the audience.
Yes, please.
There we go. We are back. Welcome back to our next item, which is consensus items. We have items A through H.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
Um...
Ms. Bradford.
I move that we adopt the consensus agenda taking out A, B, C, D, G, and H.
A, B, C... Say it again? I'm writing it down.
Well, actually...
A, B, C?
Yes, A, B, C, D, G, and H. But I have a question first, if you, if you could indulge me to ask that question.
Go ahead, ask away.
Um, all of these MOUs and contracts, these legal documents, have they been reviewed by our board attorney? Mr. Vogel?
Mr. Vogel? Okay, so we're looking at consensus items, A through H. Yes, ma'am. Yes, sir. And I don't believe our firm has been asked to review any of these documents. If that's not right, I welcome the staff to correct me, but they don't look familiar and it's something that our law firm was asked to review.
So, Mr. Chairman, I would then move that we postpone the vote on A, B, C, D, G, and H until they've had a chance to be reviewed by our legal counsel. They advise us on contractual legal agreements, and it's prudent to have your attorney look at a contractual legal agreement before you go into it. One of those, I think, is like five years. I'm deeply concerned. So I would move that E and F be approved as a consent agenda, the others be held until next month, and that they get reviewed by our legal attorney.
Okay, before we go, so I hand up there, but before we go to the hands, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, now we have a first and second. All right, let me ask Ms. Sutton, since we're...
So our normal process is if we use the contract template that the attorney reviewed initially, when the attorney first came on with us, we don't send that, those contracts again for the attorney to review. But if there are changes, if the contract is not the template that's already been approved, those are approved by our attorney. So that's the, that's the process that we're currently using.
Other discussion? Ms. McMahon?
Down this way.
I'm sorry, Ms. Grabill had her hand up first. I apologize.
Yeah, I'm just wondering why we didn't say anything about this at the agenda review. That is our process. And Mr. Vogel attended that meeting. He could have put his hand up at that time. I haven't reviewed them. So I'm, I'm just... So I'm just having a hard time with this because we asked all the questions that we wanted to ask, and we spent about 30 minutes on that topic going through them.
Mr. McManus?
Just a question, so I understand, Ashley, you were saying that this is pre-approved because of the blueprint that you use each time, a template, it was your word?
Correct. So we have a template, and all of that's been reviewed by the attorney. And we're just filling in things like the vendor name, the vendor address, the dollar amount. So those are the additional items that are being added to the template.
Let me ask you a question of Mr. Vogel. I'm going to speak next. Mr. Vogel, have you reviewed the template? I think I'm recurring, like remembering a kind of a basic template that we may have reviewed, you know, way back, you know, when we began in the July-August time period. Yes? You did review the template. Okay.
So my question would be...
Well, okay, Ms. Bradford?
My question would be, of these A, B, C, D, G, and H, every one of those is a template?
Ms. Sutton?
Give me a second. I need to look to see if they're all templates or not, and then I can confirm, or if those that have contracts...
Well, I can speak to the contracts for construction. These were developed by the attorney and adopted by the school board, and Mr. Vogel and his associates have reviewed those. So as Ms. Sutton was saying, we're just filling in the, filling in the blanks.
So that's C?
That would be C and D. Those are two contracts for construction.
Mr. McManus?
I apologize, but I'm just, I'm still trying to get my hands around this. So, Mr. Vogel, with all of you involved, so he has, the attorney has had access to the dollar amount?
No, the attorney approved the templates that were using...
The template, okay, so the procedure was approved for every single thing, A, B, C, on here?
Right.
Okay.
But the specific final contracts with the vendors' names, the address, those, we don't resend, we haven't been rescinding that to the attorney because the terms and conditions are the same in the template for each contract.
And how long have you been doing this, you and Mr. Anderson?
So, I mean, we were doing that even with Darrington and Smith.
No, I mean, before that. How many years have you been doing the template?
Ten plus. Ten plus.
Okay, and so if this has ever been called a question until now?
And we had the new attorney review the templates just to make sure that he was okay with the templates we had been using.
Well, someone explain to me, I apologize, why we need to review it again?
I'm asking if it had been, and that's the first that we've heard.
Well, Mr. Vogel said he had, I'm not sure what his answer was, but Mr. Anderson and...
There's, there's four things here that we don't know that are from a template yet.
Okay, let's, can we pull over?
That's why I was just saying, let's postpone it a month, let's figure it out and bring it back, or we can just do it now.
Ms. Crable?
Yes, I'm looking at the Cooperative Innovative High School renewal form, which is something that comes straight from DPI. So that would be one that I'm feeling like we should be pretty solid on because this is the same contract that we've done. Dr. Fason, any comments on that?
That is straight from the state. That's just something the state sends us to sign just to renew for CTEC, I mean, for Wilmington. So that is just a state document that we sign. We don't get the attorney to review that. That is a state document to continue with the high school.
Ms. Crable, your phone time?
Yeah, and I'm just looking that the budget contract for the Z-Space was exactly like the previous contracts that we've done, you know, last month too, and we had no questions about. So I, the, it's the same thing we're using, we just changed the numbers. And I know from signing these things too, is that we, we just put the new stuff in and then we go, as long as the document has been approved.
The Z-Space that we're signing now is the same Z-Space that we signed last time, it's the same document, and these dollars, for our dollars, if we don't use these dollars this time, we won't be able to use the dollars next month for our dollars. So we have to use these dollars, or we will forfeit these dollars.
Ms. Sutton?
And I will add, the Z-Space is using the standard terms and conditions template that I referred to earlier.
Okay, so we have a motion in front of us right now to approve E and F and to table A, B, C, D, G, and H. We have first and second.
May I amend that?
You may amend that.
Um, I would amend it to remove A, B. Let me check. And I think the professional development for the UNCW, is that a template? No one's answered. And the Network Solutions, is that a template? No one's answered. But the others are good, I think, from what we've been told. What brings me to this is last month, I got a contract in front of me at 7:10, and I was being asked to sign it, or to approve it right then and there, and I had never even read it. So forgive me for being just a shade on the suspicious side as to whether we're following procedure here. When I get two contracts, you know, one of them had a term of a year and eight months, and we never even read it. We just, y'all voted, I didn't vote for it, but y'all voted. So I'm just dotting i's and crossing t's because if I'm voting for something or voting against it, I want to know what I'm doing.
Okay, and first off, Ms. Mason, do you agree with just A and B now? Okay, Ms. Walker?
Well, I understand we should be extra careful on, when we vote to approve things. I feel like we've had two weeks now, and I feel like we've already talked about them. And if they are boilerplate contracts or ones that we've used before and we're just renewing, and they have been, the attorneys already looked at them, I just don't see why we don't approve them.
And...
Mr. Wildebohr, could you just make a note with letter B? It is the same contract template that Ms. Sutton is using for the Z-Space, so there's no reason that we should be pulling that one either. The only one that significantly...
Actually, letter B is not using that template. Letter B is an online subscription. It's basically buying our domain so we can have NHCS.net, and it's done online. There's no people to talk to, so they won't sign ours. So what I included was the, their terms and conditions. I was supposed to give that to Dr., to Mr. Vogel to sign, and he has not reviewed it. So that's one he has not reviewed.
He has not reviewed it?
Yes, and he should have, yes.
When did you submit it to him?
Huh?
When did you give it to him?
It's on me. It's on me. I didn't send it to him. That's 100% on me. So I didn't realize that that was one that was marked that way. So that is, that one's on me. That's letter B.
B as in baby?
B as in boy.
All right, so right now, so B needs, B definitely needs to be pulled back, but...
What was the answer on A? Anyone?
Yes, Dr. Barnes?
Just wait my turn.
Yes, so, Dr. Barnes?
A mirrors the other agreements we have with schools to host student teachers. There is no monetary value with A, but it follows the same pattern of our other agreements with schools.
Like for interns and that kind of thing?
For interns and student teachers, yes.
Okay. Ms. Bradford, would you like to amend one more time?
Okay, I move that we approve the consent agenda. We'll move back. Item B, Network Solutions LLC contract, to be reviewed by the attorney.
Ms. Mason, do you agree?
And I will second that.
Okay. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. That's a 7-0, we can carry on. All right. Next, we have policy consensus. Ms. Mason?
Only two policies this month. Policy 5020, Visitors to the Schools and School Facilities. This was brought forward by Ms. Varnum and Ms. Souza, and the changes are on the, on letter F regarding private service providers in schools. And then Policy 3470 slash 4305, Alternative Learning Programs slash Schools. And this was just, this was brought forward by myself, just to provide clarity and on who terminates a program or a school that is an alternative learning program or school.
Would you like to make a motion?
I move that we...
Accept them.
Accept them, thank you.
I'll second that. Oh, you second that? Okay. Any discussion? Ms. Crable?
And I just want to point out that in Policy 3470 slash 4305, that Mosley is not an alternative school, that there's no language about that in the policy, but I just want to make sure that we are all clear and all listeners are clear that the Career Writers Academy at Mosley is not an alternative high school.
Any other discussion? All in favor of these two policies, accepting these two policies, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? All opposed? You don't get to vote.
Sorry.
Dr. Fason?
I have to clarify something. I'm sorry. We went back and actually did some clarification with the state. Mosley was actually, in 2008, it was designated as an alternative school. The board never went back and took that designation away. So because it is an eddy as an alternative school, it is labeled with the state as an alternative school. So to get that label away, it will have, the board would have to make that determination.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification.
Is now appropriate to make a motion to clear that designation, to change that designation? I'd like to make a motion that we change that designation.
Okay. Wait, will you need a second? Is there a second? We want to take the alternative school designation away from Mosley. Is there a second? Hearing none? That dies. We will carry on with old business. New Hanover County Schools Finance Memo. I believe Ms. Bradford brought this forward, so I'll let her speak first. Ms. Bradford?
I'm really concerned that we're telling principals that we can't, there was a memo that came out today, the news media's already gotten it, so they're, because they're asking about it, that we can't afford to buy supplies for the schools. And I think there were four or five things in the memo, and I'm really concerned we're at that point. That tells me that, you know, we're, we're at rock bottom here if we can't buy notebooks and pencils and things that are needed. And how did we get here? Where's the planning so that this doesn't happen? And I don't know what other surprises are around the corner. And it, and it really, really concerns me. We have people who come and they speak and say, you know, ask the, you know, ask the county commission for everything that you could possibly want. That's not really good leadership to do that. You're supposed to set a budget and live within it. You're supposed to anticipate costs that are coming up. You're supposed to anticipate a recession or a downfall or a student decline in enrollment. You're supposed to anticipate those things and adjust accordingly. And yet, we're in this big, giant crisis that gets worse instead of better. And I don't want to leave it, you know, to where as soon as the meeting's over, everyone speaks to the media and tells them what they think, but that we don't address it here as a body of seven people that are responsible to the voters for what happens up here. So that's my concern. To find out, you know, at 1:30 in the afternoon before a meeting that, you know, we can't afford, we've told our principals they can't afford to buy supplies because we're in such a dire budget crisis, that's a very serious concern. Thank you, Mr. ...
Ms. Sutton, would you like to address that?
I'm sorry, is there a question, or is there something specifically you want me to speak to, or I can just talk about the memo in general? I just want to make sure.
I mean, the memo in general would be great.
Okay, all right. So annually, we set year-end deadlines to meet federal and state regulations, so that's not new. Normally, those deadlines are set to end at the end of May. State and fed, that would be local money, and state and federal normally set to end at the end of April. And that's a memo that we send out every year, and that memo already went out earlier this year with those deadlines. And so when we were analyzing the budget for next year and preparing, we decided we were going to, instead of having those local deadlines be at the end of May, we've pushed those up until now. But we know that there are some things, our schools, because we have changed the deadlines on them without notice, we know that there are still things that they probably have to do that are mandated. And so with that in mind, at the same time we sent out the memo, we also sent out a form for them to complete. So it's an, it is an extra step for them, but it allows a little more oversight on spending at the end of the year so we can make sure the things that we're purchasing at the end of the year is not just to be purchasing to be purchasing, that it's, they are things that are needed by the schools, not just trying to spend all the money. Because anything, of course, we don't spend this year, we can use towards next year's budget. So the intent of the memo was not to say you can't buy anything. The intent of the memo was to say, please complete the form and have it evaluated by the chief finance officer and the superintendent before you move forward with the purchase. And I'll be glad to answer any other questions you have.
Ms. Barnhart had her hand up?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Sutton, that was my question, is understanding. I appreciate Ms. Bradford bringing up the direct concern. If I'm a principal and I have a need for supplies, this memo is not saying you are not allowed to get supplies. It is saying we want a process to make sure that we are spending the funds that we have in the most efficient way possible throughout the district.
Exactly.
Okay, thank you.
So along those lines, I'm looking at the last sentence in the first paragraph. Such diligence is necessary to ensure the schools will have adequate funds available for next fiscal year. I'm just confused about that. Are we trying to save this year to add it on to next year?
Yes, so what I was trying to communicate in that line was just to share whatever funds we don't, whatever local money we don't spend this year will fall into fund balance, right? And then it would be available for future use. So the intent, once again, wasn't to stop people from making purchases that were required or needed. It was just to stop people from spending money just to spend their budget down.
Is there anybody, is there anyone that has not asked a question that has a question before we go around for a second round? Ms. Bradford?
On that note, just last month, we hired two new law firms, one without looking at the contract, adding expense to our current budget. So I'm gonna be bold here and move that we terminate those two agreements that we agreed to last month, which a majority of you voted to approve in the March meeting. Under the circumstances, we should not be adding any other vendors, any other expenses to our already challenged budget.
I'll second that.
First and second. Other discussion? Ms. Walker?
So I, I think we hired the additional law firms to cover special education or exceptional children issues, which will not, they won't overlap with the attorney we have now. So I don't think that's extra things that we're paying for.
Others? Ms. Crable?
And I don't know who the second law firm she's referring to, but would you, would you clarify who that second law firm is?
Sync Law Firm and Prentice School.
Those two? Okay, so, all right, so that I agree. I thought she was talking about something else, another law firm that we needed to have to handle other matters.
Okay, so we have...
Yeah, so I would, yeah, I would say that we, that doesn't count on this because we're just covering ourself. And we're not comfortable with Mr. Vogel.
We have a motion and a second. Ms., would you, this is to eliminate the contracts for the Sync and the, the Sync Law Firm and the Prentice School Law Firm. Ms. Boo, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Wildebohr?
No.
Ms. Mason?
Yes.
Ms. Barnhart?
No.
Ms. Bradford?
Yes.
Ms. Crable?
No.
Mr. McManus?
No.
And Ms. Walker?
No.
Okay, that's defeated. Five to two. Is there any other discussion about the New Hanover County Finance Memo? Ms. Crable?
The, I'm assuming that this means also too that board members will not get reimbursed for travel expenses in between schools and to, I mean, huh? Doesn't matter? Okay. And then any of our travel monies that have already been approved, they're still, I mean, I'm not going to use them because I'm going to keep it in the pot, but the, I just wanted to make sure that, no, I don't care. No.
Ms. Walker?
I mean, I know it, I know it says it...
I'm ready to do my part.
Does that mean that these folks will have to pay out of pocket for any kind of, out of county, travel in county? Ones that aren't, so it just says ones that aren't approved already? Is that what that says, so there's no additional? There's four months left in the budget year.
Related to travel, is that the...
Right, yeah, so, yeah, sorry, number one.
So if, if, what we're saying is, don't incur that travel if it's not needed, but if you have to do that as... if you have to do that as part of your job, and I gave examples like going to the bank, traveling between schools, then we're required by IRS regulations to reimburse our employees when they're using their vehicles for that type of travel. But we ask that the supervisors or budget managers be aware of our limitations here and to not do that if we don't have to.
All right, Mr. McManus.
Question, does that also affect the board travel monies?
No.
Absolutely not, in any shape, form, and all fashion? And why don't, then maybe we should give what we have left, if we're gonna take it away from the schools, I don't see how we can go out there and start traveling when we don't have money in our schools and give that to the schools?
I think it already increases transfer loans.
All right, we'll carry on with our new business, School Safety Committee Discussion. I believe Ms. Bradford, you brought this up, so actually, I want you to head, start that off for us, please.
Okay. We have three policies, Policy 1510, Policy 4200, Policy 7270, the deal with safety, we're gonna want to consult those. But I believe that safety in our schools is our responsibility. I respectfully continue to disagree with Tharrington Smith, the lawyer who stood in the court and declared it isn't the school's responsibility to keep students safe. I believe it is. Insanity is doing the same thing again and again and expecting a different outcome. We must have a different outcome. I move to create a seven-member board committee to address student safety.
Okay, there's a motion to.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
Further discussion?
Let's, let's, Mr. McManus.
Ms. Bradford, is this, when you're saying school safety, you're also meaning or implying the behavior?
Yes.
Student discipline?
Yes.
And accountability?
Yes.
Attendance?
Sure.
Accountability for whatever we have in place as far as policy. Maybe summer school, requiring kids who are far behind. Because the safety of students, to me, does just involve discipline, it involves academics, attendance, passing when I'm not prepared to go to the next grade. We've got to start addressing that, folks. So if you say that's part of it, then I'll support.
Ms. Walker?
So I like the idea of having all seven of us, because I think we all bring something different to the table. I know Mr. McManus brought up discipline. I'm gonna throw in mental health, and I'm gonna throw in ACEs and trauma, because I feel like it's all related. You know, obviously, I'm, we're all concerned with the potential cuts, like I'm sure we, none of us want them. But we were, I think a couple of us were at a social worker conference today this morning, and, you know, the idea of, of cutting folks like that, I think is gonna cause things to be unsafe as well. And I know I attended something this, this weekend, and I heard from a special education teacher that talked about, if we cut more special education teachers, that's more students that won't have those services, and that could be a safety issue too. So I think if we can all come together and bring what we have to the table and make a, make it a robust discussion, I'm, I'm for it.
Ms. Crable?
Yeah, I, I think adding another committee is a superfluous approach, is that we can have work sessions to discuss that. We, I, Ms. Barnhart made some comments about, you know, her concerns about traffic safety, that's a whole nother, that's a whole nother realm. The mental health, that is a student mental health safety issue. The, having a all-seven board committee is basically just having another work session. And there are some issues that we are not going to be able to talk about in public. And I forgot to look up the state statute that says we don't post, you know, our safety plans, we don't post our, our maps, you know, Eddie, you may know that better than, I forgot to look it up. If you know what that is, just spatter off. But if the whole intent is for us to have more consistency with the policies we already have, that's noble. But we have policy committees that can, if we don't think our policies are good enough or tight enough or harsh enough, then let's look at our policies. And then hold the superintendent and his staff, and the principals mainly, accountable to that. Having a whole nother committee, I'm just wondering, what are we gonna do? We don't direct the work of the employees. So if we have a committee, committees are supposed to have a subject matter expert that goes along with that. So this is a multifaceted approach. So we would have to have someone from Julie Barnum's department, we'd have to have somebody from Eddie Anderson's department as a subject matter expert, when all we have to do is just ask them for updates. And they can give us updates, quarterly updates if we need them, if we want monthly, I don't know that monthly is what we want, but maybe we do. But maybe quarterly. Establishing a whole nother committee to sit around and rehash all the things we've been talking about when we already have committees in place. If we're not happy with those committees, then let's look at that groundwork first. Let's give our chant, our staff a chance to do what they've been tasked and we pay them to do. The, I, I just don't get how, I mean, we're, we're getting out of our lane of governance, because what is this committee going to do? You know, we, we're gonna recommend to ourself. You know, board committees recommend to the board, action. So we're basically just gonna recommend action to ourself and then action to the superintendent, which is what he's already tasked with doing. So I, I just think that we're adding another layer that is not important, I mean, I shouldn't say not important, that will not benefit what we want to do. I'm a safety person through and through, that's my career, that is what, and that's what I believe in. But we've got, we already have a safety management team that Chuck Silverstein, our executive director, leads. We've been asked and tasked by the governor and Ben David and Jay Corpenning to look harder in our communities, the NC Safe Program. There are some of the things that we want to solve that aren't really solvable at our level, but we can be part of a community task force. Jay Corpenning has a community safety, safety task force. I don't know when the last time they met, but we already have all these resources out there. We've got our SROs that we can, that we can, that are on the safety committee. We've been invited several times to attend that safety committee and learn about what we do as a whole already in the district. So I'm, I'm just wondering why, if we want to cut down on unnecessary expenses, I'm thinking our time is an, is an expense. That we don't want to cut, that we should not be cutting into, so.
Okay, well, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Crable. Has anybody like, that has not spoken once, like to speak? Go ahead, you, yeah, you just seconded, go ahead.
Is this the second?
No, this is your first, would you just second?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I had wrote down a couple of unique safety challenges. As Ms. Crable said, staying in our lane, it started this school year, I had talked with Mr. Anderson about school bus safety. And he was able to reach out to the county, and they had a billboard and working with our state NC DOT to have flashing lights so that everybody had unified language about schools back in session, school bus safety, what to do when you are on a school bus. And so I think there are some unique challenges that we've, we've heard people from the call to audience bring to us. And I wrote down school zone signs, the paints, lights around our school, sidewalks around our school. That's a unique opportunity for this board to come together, to work with those multiple entities, to work with WMPO, to work with NC DOT, to work with our county, so we can help shine those areas that we can say, hey, here's a, here's something that we could really use some improvement on. Direction of traffic is through NC DOT, excuse me, and we have to get that permission. So I see this as an opportunity for the board to work with multiple entities to help the flow and the safety of our schools from a bigger unit, in addition to some of these other things that have been brought up by my fellow board members. And so I think it could behoove us to do that.
Ms. Barnhart, Ms. Mason?
And I really just kind of want to reiterate what Ms. Barnhart said. I think that we all have our own separate experience. Ms. Crable has amazing experience on safety, but we have also other people who have been involved in policy. Ms. Barnhart's not on policy anymore, but maybe she knows of a policy that we, we might not see. And so I think having all seven of us would, would make the discussion definitely more robust, as Ms. Walker said, but would give us a focus. We spend so much time disagreeing, it would be nice to have a, a meeting of the seven of us where we can agree that this is the route we want to take. So I'm in support of it as well.
Thank you, Ms. Walker.
Oh, thank you. Kinda wrote it down so I wouldn't forget. Sometimes it's hard to keep it in there. So a couple points, there are, clear there are members of this board who feel that they're important and emergent issues that we should discuss. I don't think it's just members of this board, I feel like staff members as well. I've heard from staff members, discipline, safety, traffic, whatever, there's a lot of things that envelop, you know, are involved with the word safety. But what we can do to the Scrables point, I mean, we can make this an ad hoc committee, which is technically, it's a, it's a, it's for a specific purpose and maybe for a specific amount of time, we can give ourselves a, a goal of a certain amount of time to, to meet or talk about it. That way, I mean, it doesn't have to be a permanent, it can be an ad hoc, we have ad hoc committees before, for purposes. So I mean, that way, we're keeping it focused and we can, we can get to it in emergent time, that, so it's not just stretched on forever. So that's, that's gonna be my, my suggestion, if we do this committee, we make it an ad hoc. I mean, we, we do it in a determined way, and we all bring something to the table.
Thank you, Ms. Walker. Bradford?
Well, Ms. Walker, I had, didn't want to bring a plan, or didn't bring a motion without having some sort of plan, knowing that there are seven completely intelligent people on this committee, we are not gonna all agree on everything. But here's what I was thinking, if we had a committee of seven, then we break it down into three ad hoc committees, two, two, and three, to be assigned by our chair, because some of us are going off the board in eight months and some of us are staying on, so we need, he needs to mix it up with, with the way he does that. But if we divide into three subcommittees, three ad hoc committees underneath the umbrella, and then each subcommittee take a lane, for example, discipline, and maybe under that is, is, is all the other things we've talked about, but then maybe traffic and school buses is one of them. But each ad hoc committee then decides which, which lane, which, which lane do they want to focus on? So you have four lanes, and we only have three committees. So each, each committee gets their own lane, and then a third of another bigger lane, which may be a discipline. Maybe cell phones go under the committee that Mr. McManus wants to be on, because he's kind of spearheading that. But we divide it up by agreement, after we're assigned to a committee, of what's our most important interest to see some resolution. This isn't a quick fix. We're not gonna, you know, come up with something in, in a couple of weeks. Hopefully, by the end of all of our terms, we've improved school safety. It's a long-term thing, but if we divide into three subcommittees, then we come back together on a routine basis as a whole committee and say, this is what our committee's come up with, spouse yours, and then everybody reports on that one-third of whatever we agree that one-third is, whether it's discipline, or, you know, maybe it's hardened structures. We can, the first thing I'd say to do is after we're appointed to committees would be, everyone list everything you want to see this done, and then we divide up by priority. Kind of like, we've done this sort of thing before, strategically just plan it out. I think it works. I've been out there in the community asking people, and people believe that, that we have issues. I mean, just to remind you, on Friday, March 20, a student was found to have a loaded pistol on his body. Two students in February, on successive Fridays, a pre-K and a Rachel Freeman child had a nine-millimeter loaded in a backpack. These things can't continue, it's not, you know, we're not reinventing the wheel here. Every school district and across the nation, across the state, have these same problems, but some are doing a little bit better job than we are, and we think we can do better. We're not taking Mr. Anderson's place, we're not taking Mr. Silverstein's place, we are adding seven really good minds to that mix, to the paid staff that's already doing it. Thank you.
Ms. Crable?
So what would be wrong with not having a whole nother committee that one of us is going to chair? And then the board chair does not appoint the leaders of subcommittees, unless we say that that's what we want him to do. The, the committee would be doing that themselves. But what would be wrong with having a work session, a special work session every month, where we talk about the, the individual issues, so that we all can have input to that? Our committee needs, by definition, we have a subject matter expert. So we would, we would be needing to engage the folks over here in some manner to help us develop agendas and to get the work done, because we are not a body that gets the work done. They are the body that gets the work done. So I'm just thinking that we don't necessarily need all the, now we're talking about four other committees and maybe more, when we could have work sessions already planned in to our day. Our policy allows us to have an interim meeting on the third Tuesday of the month. So there are other alternatives than setting up more structure that we just are going through checking off boxes. And I liken this to, we're a corporation, we're, we're a big company. And it's like saying that a company has safety committees down the line, and then they have division safety teams. And then the corporate C-suite people come in and say, you know what, we don't like or value the work that you're doing, you're not doing it right. So we want to have another committee that we're just gonna tell you what to do. So I'm, I'm just thinking that this is, and it's not that I don't value safety, I just think we already have structures in place and we just need to use them better. We keep talking about that, you know, the folks over there aren't managing properly. Well, we're just adding a whole nother, four other committees to try and manage that. So I just don't think it's necessary.
We are just about out of our time for this discussion, so we do have a motion and a second in front of us, that is to form a safety committee. Since I haven't done a lot of speaking this, I would like to, to clarify, and my thought in this is that we, I could bring back to our agenda meeting at the end of the month, these possible subcommittees, and we could start the discussion more robustly at that point, exactly what we're gonna do, how we're gonna do it. But that's just a suggestion, but we do have a motion and a second in front of us.
You repeat the motion, please. Safety committee of seven is what I heard.
That's it. That's it. Ms. Boo, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Wildebohr?
Yes.
Ms. Mason?
Yes.
Ms. Barnhart?
Yes.
Ms. Bradford?
Yes.
Ms. Crable?
No.
Mr. McManus?
Yes.
And Ms. Walker?
Yes.
That's a six to one, and I'll bring back the other information, we'll have a further discussion. We'll add that to our agenda meeting soon, or at the end of the month, not soon, it's getting very close. At this point, we'll carry on our discussion, school climate survey. Mr. McManus?
Well, simply, I think that we need to do another, like to get a pulse on our staff with regards to discipline, with regards to safety, with regards to what's going on in their own schools and collectively as a school system. I think that's, you know, some people say get a pulse, whatever you want to call it, how you want to label it, I just think that's the right thing to do. It needs to be simple, needs to be, unless somebody wants to, where they can circle rather than have to write their handwriting. It needs to be done so they'll feel safe. There's always this rumor that somebody's gonna be able to find out what they wrote. I don't think that's possible unless we did that from the get-go, I don't think we're that dumb. But I just think that's something we need to do.
Would you like to make that motion, sir?
I do, I so moved, yes, sir.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have first and second, Mr. McManus. McManus with the motion, Bradford's second, Ms. Walker?
So the, in, in my mind, there's two thoughts that go, at least two, that go into doing a service like this. And we've done one, we did one a couple of years ago. I wouldn't say use the exact same questions, but we can model it after that, but I feel like there's other questions that are probably pertinent. You know, I would like to get a pulse on morale as well. I don't know what that question looks like yet, but maybe the board, we can put our heads together and come up with some in different categories. I've heard discipline, I've heard safety, and I'm, and I brought up morale. So I don't know how to exactly structure it. I guess the next question would be, how is it administrated? And, you know, I think the, some of the feedback I got from last time was that there were folks that were nervous to do it, just because. folks that were nervous to do it, just because they didn't know if there were any identifying, you know, information on there. So whatever it looks like, I would like for it to be as anonymous as possible, and the data be as pure as possible, so we can get the best, you know, information out of the survey. So, just, that's open for discussion.
I agree. I think, maybe, my thought, my thought, I'm going to speak real quick, is that I think that maybe doing something even as easy as a Survey Monkey, but as long as you have, you know, I would say, obviously, no names, maybe certified or non-certified, that's the only identifier at all, you know. And I guess my question would be, would we want to do it school by school or not? You know, that's the other question, too, because we could have a school that has some concerns, or another school that doesn't have concerns, you know, that, oh, the school's doing great. So, you know, I think that might be another good identifier, you know, Laney High School and certified, that's the only identifiers or something like that. Just a thought. Ms. Crabill?
So, I want to ask a question of Dr. Barnes, and then I have some other things to add. So, we're currently in process with the teacher working condition survey, correct?
The survey closed last Friday on April 5. We had almost nine, I'm looking, 91% I think of our staff has completed the survey.
So, on that survey, I haven't, you know, we haven't seen it, obviously. Are there questions on there that address discipline, school safety, all the things that we're talking about up here?
I think the North Carolina Teacher Working Condition Survey is sort of a broad-spectrum antibiotic. It sort of asks questions about all sorts of different things. Parent involvement, leadership, culture, climate, discipline. It sort of hits the whole board. It does ask some specific questions. Is your school a safe place to work and learn? It asks some questions like that, and it does break it down by school for us. We've got, like I said, the survey closed. We'll get the results of that sometime early summer. June usually is when we see it.
Okay, thank you. So I want to ask my questions now. So, my points are, what audience is the discipline survey intended for? Climate survey, what is it intended for? What audience, Mr. McManus? What audience?
Well, I think we're doing, which would probably, I guess, as we discussed and defined, but I think we'd be helpful to identify schools, but at the same time, we're looking for climate. We want to feel how people feel.
No. My question is, who will be taking the survey? Certified staff, classified staff, principals, executive directors, you know, who supervise principals?
Let me ask that question with a question. If we're going to do it, which I don't have a problem with at all, as a matter of fact, I'm glad you asked that question, then we could break it down by school, office staff as a whole, or maybe custodial staff, or maybe bus drivers. I think we don't need to leave anybody out, I guess is the answer I want to say.
Okay, so, all right, so that needs to be clarified.
Part of our committee is going to clarify what we're going to do.
Are we having another committee now?
No, as a board, I mean, excuse me.
Okay. So, if the, who creates this climate survey? And will it be someone from district leadership, from the student support division, or is another ad hoc committee that we're putting together? Is it, our last survey that we did was put together by the communications department? Will it be online, you know, for people to do? How will they feel protected that they, if they want to answer anonymously? Because if you do it by school and you say "office staff," you only got like one, you know, so that's going to be kind of feeling like I'm under the pressure. So then, who collects and collates the survey data? Who analyzes the data and then creates, suggests, implements, revise district policies and procedures, or procedures, and then potentially making recommendations to the board for policy changes? Have we looked at the policies in question, the ones that, some of those that Ms. Bradford listed off, but specifically 4,300? So, there's a lot of stuff that goes involved into this survey, if we want to do it with fidelity. But the main thing is, who's creating the questions? Who's collecting the data? So who over there is going to get more work? And then, who analyzes this data?
I do have to say that there was one point that Ms. Crabill brought up that I absolutely agree with. If we were to ask specific schools, I think that there are some school populations that are so small that it would be easily identifiable, and I would be hesitant to isolate each school specifically for that reason. I want, as Ms. Walker said, I want our teachers and our staff to feel that they are safe enough to be able to answer honestly and candidly. And I think that if we are too specific in our groupings, that they may not.
Well, I think, if you go certified, classified, you're, if you're going to create a school, if you wanted to be certified, I would like to, you know, just that people would be served, as a official, or a, you know, classified, or any number of other folks. Well, I think Ms. Mason and Ms. Crabill have valid questions, and that's why we need to talk about it. But to answer your questions the best I can at this moment, I would suggest that HR and communications will be responsible for putting this together and deciding what the questions would be, I guess, the best to ask at that particular time.
So that's what I kind of said, the two things are the questions and who's going to do it in the safest, most anonymous way possible, where we can get the most, you know, the most out of these surveys, because we are trying to find climate, and you're right, the other one, teacher, that was only teachers. So those are two main things. Secondly, I will just say that we have done one of these before, and it was not that difficult to do. So I don't think it's that much of an ask to do it again. I think what we just need to do is come up with the questions. I've sent you guys the list from last time. I think there's a lot there, but we want to customize this to our district. I think we, it's specific of the questions we have as board members here that we ask all the time, or what we hear from staff, we put them in there. Because, I mean, I know teachers have asked me about lots of different things, and I just think that if we can get it in a good survey that people feel safe taking, we can do that. I really do think we can do it.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I was going to offer the suggestion that maybe tonight we give a directive for the superintendent to bring back a survey to us that encompasses climate, and maybe some of the indicators that we have talked about of having classified or non-classified, and maybe even dividing it up into pre-K, elementary, middle school, and secondary high school, so that we kind of know the gauge of where that's at, maybe even suggesting with that. But I feel like that, we have a lot of good ideas of things that we would like to see, but until somebody shows us a product that we can maybe approve as a board to say, yes, we agree to the survey going out. But I think that might be a better directive tonight to say, direct the superintendent, and thus his team, to bring us a survey that would encompass a climate. And then we can add whatever questions we would want to see.
I respectfully disagree. I think at this point, you know, board members should have input. And so let me throw out, I mean, if we can pass this motion tonight, then maybe just like Ms. Walker has a list of previous questions, so anybody who wants input on the questions, they send them to whatever the designated spot is. I don't care who collects those questions. But then, working with HR and communications, we get a draft survey that we all get a shot of getting it on our computers. We look at it. We say, yeah, it's fine with me. And then we move forward. I mean, there's lots of ways to put the structure in it once we pass the motion to do it. But I think board members, I personally want, you know, some input. I just don't want to say, oh, let's throw out another survey out there, and y'all do it and let us know when it's done. That's not what we're talking about here.
By Mr. Chairman, I said, to be approved by the board. So I want to make that clarity. I don't, I wouldn't want to just do the survey. I'm saying, direct, to bring us a survey that we can approve that would then go to the staff, and we would be able to have that input.
And to clarify, I think board members want input on what the questions are, rather than have it pre-
But you have a previous one, so that's good.
Pre-done.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second to host, or to have a school climate survey. I have no problem if you guys want to send me the questions. You've already sent me those questions. We start with that. I will try to collate those questions and bring them back to us on our agenda meeting. No problem. You send them to me.
Mr. Chair?
Ma'am.
I would like to make the motion clear on who is, who are we directing to do it? Like, not just are we having a survey that is either we're going to do it, or we're directing Dr. Faust to direct somebody to do it? Because I think that needs to be clear.
Okay. Mr. McManus, here's your motion.
And that would dictate where the questions go.
Well, that should be an easy answer for you, Ms. Crabill. Dr. Faust or the Board of Ed has the right to direct Dr. Faust to do it, but we might as well direct, I would say, HR and communications are made for this.
Well, that's what I wanted the motion to be clearer.
HR, okay. That answers your question.
With our input.
And Mr. Chair, can we put a time on it, like, I think it should be done sooner rather than later. And I think we want to get the questions shooting a certain amount, I mean, maybe that shouldn't be part of the motion or not, I don't know. But if we make it kind of time-bound or whatever, we can, we have expectations, we're going to send questions to you.
It just, and I'm sure you could probably say, it was online, but how was the survey that just ended, presented, protected, whatever? How did people feel better, or?
Well, one thing, it's a longstanding survey, so an educator who's been here for a while has taken this every two years for whenever. This latest incident, they actually emailed directly a link to each employee. They put it in, and off they went. And then when we get the information back, I don't get it by school or by, you know, individual. I mean, I get the information back by school, but not who said what.
So, Mr. McManus, I just want to be clear. So your motion, your thought is that Dr. Barnes and his department would do that, or with-
Dr. Barnes and Communications.
Communications would do it, so.
And us.
Okay, so maybe if you guys-
Should we not leave that up to the superintendent to decide who does-
Well, okay, yes, yeah. I mean, what you can do is if you send me the questions, I'll send them to the superintendent.
Well, I don't think Dr. Faust, you want to do it, or you don't want to do it? I mean, what do you think about it?
We have to sit down and talk about what needs to go in. So there's a, there'll be a team of-
We're talking about it now.
No, 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 no. I'm talking about, senior leadership has to talk about it.
Oh, okay, okay. Well, actually, I don't think it's the option. No. I think the board, the majority wants to see it.
So, why don't we, and I definitely understand-
I just want to have a very clear motion on who is doing what, and if we want to have a time limit in it, then that should be in the motion, so that we are very clear, and no one's pointing fingers, and no one's getting mad, and no one's thinking that the other person's not doing the work.
Do we have, does the board feel, and, you know, be honest, do we feel like the agenda, if we had the agenda review, is that too much time? I mean, that way we have some time to get it together. We can get it to Dr. Faust. He can bring it on.
It's two weeks Tuesday?
It's two, yeah.
Is it two weeks from now?
It's two weeks from now.
It's a good two.
Okay, okay.
Can I just add, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
The communications did it last time, and it, I just, I'll resend it to you guys, what happened last time. I think communications did it, and they had got a temporary Survey Monkey account. I'm not suggesting we do that the same this time, but that is what they did last time. So.
These tables made for communications.
Okay, so.
Yeah, can you hear?
Mr. McManus's motion is to have a school climate survey of all staff that will be, we will submit questions. You can submit questions to me. I'll send them to Dr. Faust, and he will either have communications and/or HR, or whoever else he has to work on it.
Can I ask another question, please?
You may. Last one, please.
I just want to know, when are we expecting to get the results back? And will that most likely fall right into the time when we are preparing for our EOGs and our EOCs, and teachers are just very distracted? So I'm just wondering, you know, is this something that we want to have done by the, before school lets out, or is this something we want to have done after students are there, they take the survey during their, you know, teacher workdays at the very end? I mean, I don't want to be disruptive to the end of this. Like you said in your opening remarks, Mr. Wildebohr, that we want to finish strong and, you know, finish well, and we don't need to be piling on more stuff to our senior staff, their staff, and our school staffs.
Ms. Mason?
I think that's kind of the purpose of us doing it and putting it forward now, because that eliminates the end-of-the-year craziness that we all know happens. If you've been in education for any amount of time, you know that as we get closer to the end, it gets crazier. So I think that was the purpose in introducing it now, and that way we can get it done, we can get the information, and we can move on from there.
And our time is up for this. Thank you, Ms. Mason. Mr. McManus's motion is to have a school climate survey. Ms. Booley, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Wildebohr?
Yes.
Ms. Mason?
Yes.
Ms. Barnhart?
Yes.
Ms. Bradford?
Yes.
Ms. Crabill?
Yes.
Mr. McManus?
Yes.
And Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Passes seven zero. Thank you. Again, we'll get that. And thank you, Ms. Walker, for giving all that information to us already. That's awesome. We will, as I said before, need a closed session, so quickly I will entertain a motion to go into closed session pursuant to General Statute 143, 31811C, for the following purpose: to prevent disclosure of information as privileged or confidential pursuant to General Statute 115C, 402, and not consider public record within the meaning of Chapter 132 of the General Statutes. And two, to consider qualifications, competence, performance, character, fitness, conditions of appointment, or conditions of initial employment of an individual employed or considered for employment with the school system, or here, or investigate complaint, charge, grievance, or by or against any individual employee. Do I hear such a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second? I'll second that. Thank you. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Or all opposed. We're in closed session. Board members, how about if we give you about three minutes, four minutes to get in there, please? please?
All right. We are back in open session. Correspondence. Does anyone have any correspondence they'd like to share?
Yes, I do.
Mr. Crable, start from the left and go down, right down the line.
I just wanted to reiterate what Dr. Faust said. April is National Assistant Principal Month, and last week was National Assistant Principal Week. And I just wanted to reiterate how important their jobs are and how much we value them. The April is also National Autism Month, and wanted to give a shout out to all of our educators, special and gen ed that work diligently with these students to help them overcome their challenges and to be the best students that they can be. Also wanted to reiterate what Dr. Faust said, that this is, April is National Librarian Week, month, and it's also National School Librarian Month. And again, reiterate how much we value the work of our librarians and our media specialists to ensure that our students have access to all the materials that they need to be successful in their education. And then finally, April 15th is Purple Up Day for military kids, and April is the month for military students. And I don't know exactly what our population of military students is, but if we have any in our district, then want to commend them for their strength and their courage and their bravery for having to move a lot with their parents who are in the military. So, April 15th, wear purple.
Ms. Bernhardt.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Last week, I had the opportunity to go up to see the Joint House and Senate Education Committee, and Ms. Crable was able to attend part of the meeting as well. And it was a wonderful highlight of some of the great things going on in our district. We got to see Spark NC and Dr. Skipper from C-Tech was there to actually present to the committee and just talk about the great things that's happening, as well as the CLDA, the program with our 7th graders, was able to present. And so to hear the engagement from our legislators of the quality programs that we have here was just very exciting.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Mason. No, Ms. Bradford.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. I feel it's important to address one more thing, since it has been spread abroad. In November of last year, we heard a couple-minute presentation from Dr. Faison on plans for our schools which would help teach English to students newly arrived in the country. This unnoticed presentation was brief. When it concluded, I said to Dr. Faison something like, "Congratulations, this is wonderful." I sure did, I said that. I was elated. Why? I'll tell you why. Because the previous six to eight months, I had in public meetings and outside of public meetings spoken repeatedly to the staff about addressing the multilingual crisis in our school district. And all I got back was just blank stares. Not one word, not one word was said to me. "Oh, we have something that we're working on, hold tight," or "How about this one? We've been working on a plan for three years now, and we're going to share it with you soon." No, that didn't happen. So yes, I was elated that they were finally taking it seriously and we were going to start to address the issue. Three things immediately happened after that agenda briefing meeting. The school district sent an email between Thanksgiving and Christmas holiday telling the CRA Mosley families their students could no longer attend their school, and they would have to choose an alternate education. I became very concerned for those students. I started thinking, this smacks of what happened at Williston, albeit on a much smaller scale. Insanity is doing the same thing over and over again and expecting a different outcome. Second, I did my due diligence. I looked into the Greensboro School. Dr. Faison had said the taxpayers had been, tax dollars had been spent to send a team to. I read the neighbors' comments. In doing so, I learned it wasn't a school to teach students English as much as it was an immigration center with wraparound services funded at taxpayers' expense. I wondered, did the people living around Mosley off Princess Place Drive, did they know this was slated to happen to their neighborhood? Was there a county meeting on it that the neighbors got to have input? I pondered, how was it this board member knew nothing about it? And then just days later, the Mosley students and their families came with school staff to our board meeting. The students sat through an entire public call to audience, and then one by one, five of them poured out their hearts. It was hard not to cry with them. Every day, I continued to gather facts, talked to people in the county, I visited the school, I read procedure, and at our next meeting, I called for a public hearing, to hear from the public in a public hearing setting. Vice Chairman Ms. Mason called for a delay in the students' time to pick up another, to pick another school. From then on, I was increasingly convinced that this was a very bad idea. The numbers didn't make sense then, and they don't make sense now. We were overwhelmed with emails to save Mosley School, some of which offered numbers that made better sense. Now, New Hanover County Schools has more than 1,000 homeless students. New Hanover County has quite a few more homeless, multi-generational residents of this county, born and raised here. Where's their loaded-up debit card? Where's their free housing? Our tax dollars should go to support and to help New Hanover County residents, not those crossing our border right as we speak. To this day, I am still very aware of how darn close we came to having the superintendent and the staff changing the lives of every single person in New Hanover County and our students irrevocably, with zero input from the majority of the elected leaders on this board, or even the county. I say majority because at least one of us had walked back their statements saying they had no knowledge of the plan. Where the truth lies, I do not know. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. McManus. You good? Ms. Walker. All right.
I make a motion to adjourn?
Last, there we go. Motion to adjourn. Second, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, we are adjourned.[263.01]